Welcome to Kill Devil Hills Monthly Board of Commissioners Meeting. I'm your new mayor. I'm still kind of in shock about it. I have to use this, I'm getting that, that makes it official, alright. I'm new at this, I hope you bear with me, I've got a little frog in my throat. We'll start off by pledging the allegiance to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you will, please join us in a moment of silence.
Thank you.
All members have had their packet for a few days and the agenda is before you. In case you didn't know what we were looking for, we're looking for an approval of the agenda.
Oh, we can refer to the agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? We have an agenda. First item on our agenda is our first of two public comments we have at each of our meetings. You can sign up in advance or just stand up, we do have one person signed up already. Pete, okay. You know, you know the rules.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, and members of the Board of Commissioners. My name is Pete Burghammer of American Engineering. It's my honor and pleasure to continue to serve for this town as town engineer and what a pleasure for a town that cares enough for its citizens to be proactive and innovative in keeping up with your infrastructure needs. So, welcome to the new commissioners and I wish you a happy new year and a happy new decade. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment, anybody like to speak? Alright, hearing none, we'll close the public comment and I'll tell you a little side anecdotal story. Pete called me the other day and said, "Do you know somebody named Ashley Sproul?" I said, "Well, I don't know the Ashley Sprouls." He said, "Well, how about, oh wait, it's Allison, that's my wife." He said, "Well, you won't believe this, but we were finishing up the grating on the street and dug up a wallet, it has your wife's cards in it." And so he returned it to me. My wife had lost this wallet five, four or five years ago. It's been underground all that time. So I appreciate it very much and we still got $20 on Starbucks cards. Thank you for that, you never know what you're gonna dig up. Alright, any response to public comment? Next item is introductions and presentations. Our first presentation is that of the comprehensive annual fiscal, fiscal, financial, I'm gonna say these words right, the financial report for fiscal year 2018-19 and the award for excellence in financial reporting for fiscal year 2018. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Teresa Osborne from the accounting firm of Dowdy and Osborne in Naxhead and I'm happy to be here this evening to present the results of the Town of Kill Devil Hills June 30th, 2019 independent audit. The town has received what's referred to as an unmodified opinion on its financial statements, which is the best opinion that you can receive. This opinion confirms that the town's financial statements are presented fairly and in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. The town goes above and beyond the basic financial statement reporting requirements by preparing the comprehensive annual financial report, or CAFR as it is referred to, which provides additional statistical and historical information on the town's finances. I would like to take just a few minutes this evening to review some highlights for the year by fund. The report is about 150 pages long. So I would be here all night with you and try to go through the whole report, so I'm just gonna summarize it into just a very few brief comments. The general fund is the largest fund for the town and it comprises most government functions except for those that are reported in the water and sewer fund or capital project fund. The town ended the year with an unassigned fund balance of $12,483,453. This is an increase of approximately $2.8 million over the prior year. This increase is largely attributable to financing the final phase of the public works complex as opposed to using funds budgeted in the general fund. This unassigned fund balance represents 66.8% of the current year general fund expenses compared to 52% in the prior year. The town has a minimum fund balance policy which instructs management to strive to maintain an unassigned fund balance of 35% of budgeted expenditures and your fund balance exceeds this minimum, which is a good thing. Overall, the general fund ended the year with a strong fund balance and a strong financial position. The water and wastewater funds account for the town's water and sewer operations. Operating revenues in those two funds increased by about $220,000 and operating expenses increased by $100,000. The effect of this increased operating income from 300, this increased the operating income from $373,000 in fiscal year 18 to $495,000 in fiscal year 19. Ideally, you want operating revenues to cover operating expenses and the town has accomplished this. The capital reserve fund ended the year with $3,192,935, most of which is reserved for beach nourishment. There are some other small reserves included in that total, but the largest part of that is beach nourishment. In all of the funds, investment earnings were up significantly due to higher interest earning rates and more favorable market performance last year. The town implemented what's called GASP 88, which is a new financial reporting standard. The effects of reporting for the town were minimal but included minor changes to debt disclosures in the notes to the financial statements. I'll end by confirming the town's strong financial position as well as letting you know the high caliber work being done by your finance department. I'd like to express my thanks to Beverly, your finance officer, Charlene, your assistant, and the entire finance department for their work to produce this audit report and to help make things easy for me when I come in to do the annual audit. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Fantastic report.
You got some news, questions?
Yeah, great, great, great news on the numbers in a bunch of ways there. Does anybody have any questions?
Seems like we had a person a long time ago that kind of laid some groundwork for having excellent reports like this and our finance department does a great job.
Sure. You have a great reputation and we all continue to extend our appreciation and thanks for everybody in the department and for the audit crew that worked with you as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm frogging my throat, seems to be getting worse.
Charlene Allen, I'm gonna present the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Reporting right along with this. The Government Finance Officers Association presents the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting to the Town of Kill Devil Hills for its Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the Fiscal Year Ended June 30th, 2018. This is the 31st consecutive year that the town has received this award. A copy of this is also in your report, the certificate, and along with that, there is a plaque right behind me and each year that we receive that award, they give us a button and we put that on there. So that is part of that. The Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting Program was established to encourage and assist state and local governments to go beyond the minimum requirements of generally accepted accounting principles to prepare comprehensive annual financial reports that evidence the spirit of transparency and full disclosure and then to recognize individual governments that succeed in achieving that goal. I would also like to extend thank you to the finance department for all their efforts and their expertise in putting the report together as well.
Thank you so much and congratulations to everybody who earned this well-deserved award for the 31st time in a row, that's pretty impressive. Super impressive. Moving on, do we have any old business? Alright, moving on to new business. Our first item is appointments. We have a number of them to talk about. You see them now on the agenda. We've got Government Education Access Channel Committee, the Street Improvement Special Project Committee, both of those need a new representative from this board. There's also the Personnel Board and Planning Board appointments to talk about. First up, Government Education Access Channel. In the past, I guess, she has been the representative, is that right? It does not necessarily have to be the mayor, I know. Just put it out there to see if there's somebody who had interest in serving on that board. It's a little tough for me to make that time of day, but I can do it if it comes down to it. I know you've got a lot on your plate, you've got a lot on your plate, we've talked about some other things. One last chance to jump in and take it from me, please. Alright, well, I guess for now we'll put my name down in that slot, but always up, hope there were last minute turns on that. Next is the Street Improvement Special Projects Committee. Same deal, we've talked about that a little bit. How's everybody feeling today? Nobody's able to take him out back and fight it for it? That's a great committee, I really would like to be on that one, I'm kind of jealous. It's always kind of fun to see what the guys are up to. We have a lot to be proud of and how we take care of our fiscal plan, what comes up streets and all that sort of thing. The work looks beautiful. So, yeah, I guess that's you. Do we need to make a separate motion for each one or we kind of do them all together? Alright, moving along. Where were we? Personnel Board, I know Sue has been in position for a number of years, but her term expires January 2020. I've heard that she's interested in extending that another three years, which would take it to January 2023. I know we've had, we have a number of people who sort of put their hat in the ring in general, but I don't think anybody's really comes close when it comes to the experience and background, so.
I agree with that, she's the perfect person for that spot.
Super, thank you for all your hard work. And finally, Planning Board. Also, fairly easy appointment, I think, if we're all in consensus.
Yeah, Mark's great.
Right, he's been on there for a little while and is up for, is interested in being reappointed seat, so unless anybody had any other interjections, I will make the motion to have those four appointments made. Is there, yes?
One thing, I, you know, I understand that you're all out of town a little bit during the day. I'll do the government.
Access Channel, oh my goodness. That would help me a lot and, you know, if you can't make it, I know your schedule kind of changes week to week. If you can't make it, I'm sure that I could fill in.
I'll do that if it will help.
Oh yeah, I like to amend my motion. Thank you so much for that. So I made a motion, is there a second?
There's a second.
A chorus of seconds, you can choose whoever you like. Any further discussion about the appointments? Alright, hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed, nay? Thank you very much, that went very smoothly and even better than I expected when I had aye, folks. The next item, item two under new business is discussing, establishing goals for possible facilitated Board of Commissioners retreat. The staff was kind enough to put together lots of details from the last two retreats, which were surprisingly far in the past, one was eight years ago and the other was about 19 years ago. I would imagine we might have treats a little more often going forward, that's just my thought, but I think the previous mayor had a, had a treat in March after being sworn in in December. It's that timeframe seemed to work for you guys? Alright, the other thing I thought about was that they had in the past done these things on a weekday. More of us are working folk, would you all be open to doing a retreat on a Saturday? And take out your calendars if you think. And what do you think the timeframe, do we need two whole days, do we need like five hours? Where are you guys feeling?
Just budget one whole day.
I saw some groupies over there, I like really joking.
One whole day, I believe, we could, if we all put together some pretty strong expectations and the advance I think we can accomplish, I would need to do that. March 7th, this does not work for me, but the rest of the month, I can fit it in.
Does anybody know the date of the parade this year? Is it Patrick's Day?
Is it, is it before, it's usually before, isn't it?
Sometimes before and sometimes after.
I would imagine the 15th because it's either the 15th or the 20th.
21st is a Saturday, should be exciting, it's my birthday. I've done worse things than my birthday. Oh, that's right, good. What's that with me? Or 28th, 28th works, I have nothing on the 20th as well.
28th, go here.
I can do the 28th.
Alright.
Think we can find a facilitator to do it on the 20th, on the Saturday?
We are gonna look into that, I know the, we have the contact info for the school government and we also have the ability to look into some other folks just to make sure that we're gonna get ourselves some options in case they're. We have some options, so I will make sure that I look into those between now and next meeting and we'll have a little bit more to discuss about that, but we'll pencil it in for the 28th. Is nine to five or earlier, late? March 28th. Twist my hair. Gosh, you know, I don't know if I've told you guys this, but you're really easy to work with.
Was there a retreat?
Football game on Friday night.
Was the retreat in 2000 overnight?
I think it started and then.
It looked like it was overnight in the packet, that's why I was like, oh wow. It's been something together group, you think.
I think it was, it started at seven and then they recessed.
Resessed.
Went home.
The way it read.
Parliamentary legal leaves, says the attorney.
That's right.
Okay, so we've cut ourselves through two challenging items, went quite smoothly. So that puts us down to adopting suggestive rules of procedure for city council. So you guys got the little book here. This is on the website if anybody in the public wants to take a peek at it. They have, this is the procedures that we've been using for years and they've recently updated it. And so we are looking at some of the things that they suggested and that's what's on this little card that you all got in your packet. So I think number one, does not need much discussion, just basically putting our name in there. Kill Devil Hills, part about the voting is pretty straightforward. The other updates are how we've changed the time to 6:00 PM. The second Monday, fourth Wednesday, which is typical, although we can deviate from that if we'd like. Time and place and as we have put up any other dates, we do always put on the website. So all that sort of information, these are the sort of things that we add to the addendum. And then on the back, you've got the order of items that are on the agenda. I've seen this done a number of different ways. It's been done this way for a while. Does anybody have any interest in changing that up? I know that a lot of times folks like to do consent agenda in the beginning of the meeting, so at the end, is there a preference or a reason for going one way or the other? Doesn't really matter, I don't need to change it either, so.
I like that, it'll be preserved public comment at the beginning and the end.
Oh yeah, sure. That's been very popular, that's been around for a number of years now too, so. And then, what is the other one about the? Oh, Rule 22, a second shall not be required. The recommendation there is that that's not necessarily going to apply to us. I think just out of tradition, we've always had a second. I think the league municipalities in that event we went to have suggested not needing a second with a board this size. I could kind of make the, I could see how they're making that argument, but I think it's, it's not really necessary in our case, we're such, such a habit. So that was the recommendation we made without, does that sound good with everybody? Can you guys hear me alright? I keep realizing I'm turning away from the mic, I probably make it hard to understand. I'll try to do better about that. Alright, do we need a motion on that? Yes, alright, so looking for a motion with those recommendations as presented.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the suggested rules of procedure for city council as presented in our packet.
We have a motion on the floor, for a second?
Second to that motion.
Second. We have a second? Any further discussion? Alright, hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. We are just whipping through the agenda, you guys. We're very excited about our upcoming meeting where we have a joint brick session on the 22nd. But let's jump right into the next part here, we've got committee reports, I'm sure the West Side Recreation Group has been busy toiling away.
We did. And I have some handout for work, I'll pass it down. Pretty simple, straightforward. During the November 25th meeting, Aviation Park was reviewed including the survey results that included 278 entries. After discussion, the group decided to make the following recommendation for future amenities at Aviation Park. Continue with planned improvements, community events. Improvements, expand playground to include more equipment and of course a lot of this you saw discussed in the video. And community events, ice cream social, Halloween parade. Create large scale town recreation facility map. Then that would also include you are here to be placed at each recreational facility. Create individual map of each recreational facility to show park amenities. Connect Aviation Park walking trails to master gardeners. Walking trails, construct open air pavilion. Promote Aviation Park as a community event location. Consider incorporating public art spaces within the park, which was, I really liked that. That was, they talked about creating an art wall and sounded really good to me. And the thought process there was to survey some of the public art groups to participate and provide additional benches where possible, a lot of in-house improvements. Integrate exclusive playground equipment when the playground facilities are expanded. The West Side Recreation Group recommends the items above for Board of Commissioners' consideration. Staff recommends the board authorize the town manager to develop a plan for implementation. I'd also like to call on Cameron to talk about our surveys that we're doing now and any other information you'd like to pass along. We had a real good meeting, it, I think, of course, y'all were there and you saw that had a lot of input from the group, moving along really, really good.
Thank you Commissioner Gray, yeah, we had a great meeting back in November regarding Aviation Park. The surveys continue to be an awesome tool to just reach out to the public and continue to get more input. It's, it was amazing, you know, knowing how much, how many things are at Aviation Park and how many things that people didn't maybe realize were at Aviation Park. So I think, I think something that really got my attention was a map that really labeled all those amenities. But, you know, there's a lot of things that, we know they're there every day, but it's nice to see from, you know, our citizens for how we can improve. Because there's a lot there, so we had good discussion. Everybody brought a lot to the table, so looking forward to our next meeting Wednesday night.
Yep, it's gonna be a very interesting meeting, I hope everybody will come out and participate. Dylan with us, I think. Yeah, Dylan's one of our members on the West Side Group and plays a large part in that. I think they've been pretty exciting, haven't they, Dylan?
Oh yeah.
So I hope everybody comes out and participates.
Remember Dylan Mooney, good stuff. Alright, so staff knows what you're up to between now and then, we're good to go. Thank you for that. Alright, moving down the line. I need to put myself here. So, on to Commissioner's Agenda. I didn't ask, I'll go on for the left part.
One more committee report.
Oh, one more committee report, I'm sorry.
I was gonna invite Sue Kelly to, I'm gonna speak on one of the CACs.
I'll get the hang of this yet.
Thank you, and good evening commissioners. My name is Sue Kelly, 211 C Village Lane and I'm up here on behalf of the Community Appearance Commission. Very brief, a reminder that our next meeting this month is January 23rd, which is a Thursday, in this room at 8:30 in the morning. The public is of course welcome to attend. At that time, we will be setting our next kick butt subcommittee meeting, which not only are people invited to attend, but they can very openly participate because it's not an appointed group, it's who was really interested in working on our campaign to lessen the cigarette butt situation that we find ourselves in. But I can announce to you that the trash attack for this year, the date is tentatively set for Saturday, April 25th, with a rain day on Sunday, the 26th. We'll also say that possibly at your February meeting, we will be making the announcement of who won the appearance awards. As you may remember, every two years, we give three appearance awards. The Best Appearance, the Best Improved and the Best Commercial. These are commercial awards, they go to businesses and I think we've included churches in there over time. And then the third award is something that's in the middle of a strip mall. One, one section, one business in the middle of a strip mall. So it looks like next month we'll have those to present and we look forward to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you for all of your hard work and for the committee's work. Any other committees that I've missed? More committee reports?
One quick question on trash attack. Under last year, we relocated to Aviation Park, that worked a lot, but will we go back for staging to the fire department or at the park?
I think the problem is to stay at the park. I'm not positive, I don't think we're gonna be good though, yeah. We're safe, safe first right now.
It's a great event. Alright. One more committee reports that I didn't know about. Alright, so next item is Commissioner's Agenda.
I have nothing, man.
I have nothing this month, I'm sorry.
Not required.
I just wanted to gauge our board's interest in potentially inviting Jerry Jennings from the Department of Transportation to come in, make a report on basically everything DOT is doing, get KDH and overall Deer County, especially all the things that are really affecting our town. It would be something, if we consent to it, that we would ask staff to schedule and I just think maybe something to routine they do annually or every other year. Well, I always have a lot of questions, I think it would be, I think it's a good idea, so. How do y'all feel about that?
I know that he does that from time to time with different organizations and since we have so many new members on the board, I think that'd be a great way to start the relationship and get well versed on all the places you can find the information online, but also get our, our opinions in the mix, person to person, it's always good to do as well. I think that's a great idea, we can work on that. Alright, great idea John, thanks.
I just wanna thank Meredith and McPlanymore for the Code Ordinance book.
Oh, so nice.
That's awesome, yeah. All, everyone, and everyone who works on it, it's awesome. It looks great, it's.
Now it's up to us to. Now it's up to us to keep them updated, they just took the new ones in there, right?
You need to thank Michael and Mary for the most wonderfully organized book.
Thank you very much.
Some of us are not that organized and it's nice to have help. Alright, I had a couple of items, I guess we've talked about trash attack already. Rain dates, you might have seen the notice, but I figured at every public event it's good to bring these things up in case you were thinking about going down the Naxhead Woods. They have that ADA trail there and they have made a notice that they are. They have that ADA trail there, and they have made a notice that they are going to close that for repairs starting a couple of days on the 15th, but they should be done by the 28th, so they're just going to close that for visitor safety until they get those improvements done. So that's one item. I thought I'd cheer with you. Other than that, it is 6:29. Working our way through this. Town managers did.
Actually, we have one more.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot. I knew I forgot something. That's right. Here we go. So, yeah, this is actually on my agenda, but if anybody knows more about it than I do, I'm keen to be more educated about it in case people ask me about it. The general gist is that the, in 2019, the Wildlife Resources Commission, that's WRC, brought forward a new rule involving determining boundaries of fishing areas on salinity levels. So I don't know anything about this, but it would determine what's inland and what's coastal waters. Seems a lot of folks are upset about this, and there are a number of, you know, if you look at the, all the whereas, whereas, there are a lot of reasons why this seems to be a bad idea, and maybe even breaking a lot of their own rules. I could get down in the weeds with this, or I just figured I'd pull the rest of the board to see how you felt about it. Basically, the idea is to have this resolution to support the folks who think that this change is a bad idea for our fisheries. The idea is, what the case they're making is that it would reduce the areas that our local fishery could fish by a couple of hundred square miles, and that the rule is, they didn't say it in there, but arbitraried capricious, that it's not based in following their own rules, and basically causes a lot of harm in excess of a million dollars in economic impact. I assume they mean that annually. So anybody else a fisherman here? I'm not a fisher person, but...
No.
Okay. I know, I know just enough to be generally supportive of this idea.
I did Coastal Review have an article online about it, if you saw. So that explains it just a little bit more. I did Google it and found that, and it does seem like they are going against some of their own regulations and some of this, and maybe just a little overreaching.
Has the Deer County Board or any of the municipalities addressed this yet?
Nagsette, I think.
Was the first.
Nagsette was the first. I think that passed.
But the county is probably going down that route as well.
And there's that on their radar.
All right, just happened to hit our calendar first, so I just didn't want to dive straight in because I'm not an expert on that, but as long as you guys feel comfortable with it, I think it does seem to be the will of the local folks, that this is a kind of out there idea, needs to hear from the public that we are not for it. All right, that said, I will make that motion that we pass this resolution posing the reclassification of the jurisdictional waters in MA 1A as presented.
Second.
I hear a second. Ivy, any further discussion? All right, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposed nay? Motion passes unanimously. Thanks for that. I'm sorry, so I don't forget anything else. Got that? Got that? All right, now we're ready for the town manager's agenda.
Nothing this evening.
Nothing this evening, okay. Town attorney's agenda.
Nothing this evening.
That's always good news. Always good news. The attorney says nothing.
He's talking.
All right, next item is consent agenda.
Yes, sir. Consent agenda this evening, the minutes from the December 9th, 2019 meeting, the November 2019 month report, the annual certification of firefighters. This list must be certified by each local government in order to maintain eligibility for pension and the line of duty death benefits provided by the state firefighter for firefighters. Excuse me, I need your frog jump down here.
Oh, no.
And schedule public hearing, Chapter 153 zoning, soil erosion and sedimentation control, modification to meet state requirements. Approval of consent agenda would schedule this public hearing for February 12th, 2020 at 6:00 p.m. And then lastly, at your place at the diocese that we got here this evening, is a budget amendment to appropriate shoreline access reserve funds for engineering costs and additional construction costs of the restroom facilities at Prospect Avenue Beach Access. You may remember back in November, the then-seeded board approved us moving forward with this in order to have this restroom facility online for the upcoming season, so we're a little excited that we got some good bids in and are ready to move forward with this, with this funding that is already in the reserve fund for this park, that's just moving it to an expense item. So approval of the consent agenda is recommended, and a motion would be in order.
So gets that public hearing going, gets the money in the right account for getting the bathroom going. Do you want to hear a motion?
I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
You have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? A second there. Put down Woodley, it's a little bit louder. And a second. And any further discussion on the consent agenda? All right, hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposed nay? Consent agenda passes unanimously.
Thank you.
That is officially our last item on what was a incredibly smooth meeting for the first one with me holding the gavel. I wish I had something dramatic to say, but I don't, other than I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
This one, 22nd is when we're having our joint work session, just to remind everybody , and we'll come back to that.
Public's invited, of course.
And I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Great motion, John, and is there a second?
Second.
Second for Ivy, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And we are adjourned. Thank you so much.